All right. The lack called to order the trustee's work session on April eighth at four o'clock. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject allows. Basic rules of decorum are unacceptable at all times. Chairperson may interrupt or terminate. An individual statement, when appropriate, including when statements are out of order. Too lengthy breach personal privacy rights, abuse of seen irrelevant or other rights of property. Public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'd ask for public participation. Anybody here to comment on a non-agenda item? I don't think there's anybody signed up. Lucy, what happened that big sheen?
I'm sorry, Sarah signed up for an agenda item. So I think the way we're treating that is she's going to have a chance to ask after.
Okay.
Richard talks about the salaries.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. You're you're okay with that, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
I've heard that because I might not have to talk.
Okay, good, good. All right. Um, all right, the first topic is board of trustees tour of the school. Do we want to flip that and have Mark talk about the salary schedule first on? And before we go for the tour of the school? So that if Sarah cares, say, comments, then she can do.
I'm open to whatever.
Rather than have to wait till I do your all done with the tour.
Sure, I can do that.
For that?
Yeah, absolutely.
We can do that later. Okay. All right, so let's go with the second topic first, the West Valley Principal Salary Schedule and Matrix.
Yeah, well, we needed one of these when we found out that we'd have to hire two principals this year. And so as it got closer and closer to that time, we were looking for the salary schedule and realized that there wasn't a real good one around. And the one that we did have was pretty old, was several years old. And when I looked at it, I kind of, and I was asking Mark a little bit like what the justification's for for the range, because I felt like the range of salary was pretty, pretty wide. And so I thought it would be better to kind of clean it up and then kind of condense the salary schedule. And what I mean by wide was that it started, you know, kind of lowish, especially for, you know, the comparable job. And then it kind of was pretty high at the end, too. And I couldn't really figure out why, no matter what I divided by, they never got a consistent ratio. So what I did was I started with, you know, just a base year zero and one. And then increased it by, you know, a certain amount on top of the base, so times the base, which I can give you copies of this, too, if you want. Here, take one and pass that down so you guys can see it. And then there's a jump to in years four and five. Because that's technically the ten-year year of a principal, because principals are under ten years as well. And then it goes back to that consistent number of point oh four. And I, I like this better because it seems to be a little bit clearer. And instead of making it arbitrary and kind of wide, this you can kind of see right there where it says times the base, it's one for years zero and one, so that's two years. And then two and three, it's one point oh four. Then there's a jump of one point one zero for years four and five, and then it goes back to one point one four and one point one eight. So it's a, just a couple of point difference there in that ten-year jump year. Right now, as the salary schedule sits, years eight and nine are quite, are quite a bit higher than that number. But I just felt like having a more, you know, maybe a better start at the, at the top and less of, you know, such a higher number at the end made a little more sense, especially considering that you'd have to get, you'd have to be here for eight to nine years to make that anyway. At, at the top. So it's something that I feel is a little bit cleaner. To me, with the way that it's laid out, as times the base rather than what I felt was just arbitrary numbers, I feel like this is the best path moving forward.
And did any of the numbers change on the base?
On the, yes, on the, the, these numbers on multiplying the base, yes, those changed, too. I made those more consistent. I really don't know, everything that I look for in Cal's documents, I could not make sense of where anything came from. And there were no notes, there was only proposals. Now I looked and I could not find an actual official one that was approved with any information. So I go then, and, and this has been, you know, something that has been worked on for a while since I've been here. My first year here, you know, it was, we were on the teacher's salary schedule, you know, which is okay and fine. But the argument was you're not going to find and keep administrators at that level. And so then the board several years ago approved an adjustment or a correction to the salary schedule. And then it just kind of sat there. There was another one that was approved few years ago. But I, and that was, I think, twenty twenty-one. But that was approved, and then this is a new one to where we are as of today.
So Steph just mentioned the base is eighty-seven, eight, two, two. That it is today, and it is part of this proposal.
Right.
What, what?
So the base hasn't changed.
Right.
Except for your years.
Exactly. So what I've done is I've changed it to where it's not as arbitrary. I've made it at least, you know, tried to make it at least where it's more consistent.
So you'll see the contracts tonight are based on that base of eight.
Correct.
Eighty-seven, eight, two, two.
Yeah.
Okay. After that, all the other, whether you're classified or certified, you have steps. So he's basically, my impression of this is that he's trying to make sense out of the steps. It's irrationalized, you know. And so that's what, the plan here is that we talk about this, you guys look at it, and then you don't make a decision, you just ask questions and understand it. And then at the next board meeting, we'll put it on as an action item, and that's when right, once you, once you, if you're comfortable with this, then we move forward. But tonight, the contracts that are going to be offered to the new principals are based on this base, which is the same as the base in the current. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Do we have any ability to pull, you know, the comparable principal salary matrices from, you know, the other schools in the valley?
Yeah, I do have some information on that. The, there, there's not a lot of comparables out there, of course, because like if you look at Calispo, I mean, as of two years ago, their average compensation for principals was one twenty-four a year, which, you know, I mean, when you look at the size of those schools, you know, that school, that's K four, for example, is just as big, you know, as, as Rankin, for example. I mean, that's just kindergarten through fourth grade. The, the other schools, you could look at Evergreen, and, and they're, they're tough to look at because they have so many administrators. You know, they've got an assistant in their elementary, they've got an assistant in their middle school. They've got middle school principal, elementary principal, crossroads principal. They've got, they're, they're so much more overstaffed than we are in every way because of their title money that they get. So that's also tough to look at. And then, of course, Whitefish, you know, is, is a lot different just because they've been able to pass so many levies over the years that they're not hurting. Big Fork is another school district that could look at that's barely comparable. And this would definitely be on the higher side of, of that end.
Are you only able to give the average, or can you get an actual?
You, you can get, it's tough because whatever they give you is what you have. And when we did this before, they would only give us basically their average. And then Calispel gave us each individual person's salary and their benefits. And they also have different programs where they have contributions to retirement that, that we don't have. And they match, you know, a lot more for insurance than we do, for example. So I think just where I'd like to see us is fairly competitive in order to attract people. But where we are even with this, you aren't going to have somebody really who applies with experience because they're going to stay where they are because they're going to make quite a bit. You will have a situation where maybe someone's trying to move into the valley where you could maybe hire someone with experience there, but then they're going to try to leave as soon as they can. If, I mean, there's other fits to it, of course, other than salary. But I, I just feel like it's just a reality that we have to stay competitive, roughly competitive in the market. And I think this, this kind of condenses that where I think the highest that I saw was one oh seven on our principal salary scale, which this is the highest is one oh four.
Yeah, I'm just to the degree that we could across, you know, when we start to look at these matrices across all job types to the degree we can get as much of that information as possible, I think, even just to recognize, like you said, that potentially there's higher paying opportunities. You know, a couple miles down the road, just so we can kind of recognize, you know,
Yeah.
the implications of what we're approving.
Right, right, exactly. Yeah. And, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of movement in the admin world, read, coming up very quickly, you know, next year, too, there'll be quite a lot open. So if we want to, you know, attract and keep, it's like we're a wonderful, wonderful place to be. But when, you know, when you can have a lot more attractive offer and people, you know, know what you do here, then it's, it's going to be hard to keep people. And this doesn't fix that necessarily. To me, it makes it a little bit more understandable, better, but.
So are these yearly increases or non-early increases? Are those part of the contracts we're looking at today, or are those?
So the, just the base, so like what Mark was saying is that what I did was I took the base number and then only, I just messed with the times the base to make that more consistent. Because the other schedule that we were looking at was, was not consistent at all. And that's that difference of one minus or the times the base minus one, which is that zero point zero four, zero point zero six, zero point zero four, zero point zero four. The other ones were, were kind of all over the place. And I thought it would be way better, way better to make more consistent and predictable, just like the teacher salary schedule is just a multiplier of the base.
So Mark's answer, maybe, the way the contracts are written tonight is there's the amount, there's both principals are starting at the base, which is eighty-seven, eight, two, two. Within the contract, it says that then the approved salary schedule and matrix will be applied for few, to future contracts. And so sometimes on the back of like my contract, for example, it was, it was just, there's a hard copy on the back. So, but since Richard wanted to revisit this, I changed the language. So it said whatever the approved one is, whatever the group looks at, asks questions about tonight, and then approves at the next meeting, that will apply to, to year two, if you guys decide to renew their contracts and any of the contract. Is that, is that?
Yeah, that's interesting. Okay. And then these increases, are those pretty standard across the county?
Yes, they are. They're pretty standard. That's kind of where I came up with this point zero four on that. That's what I've seen in the past is, is done. Yeah. And that's when we looked at it a few years ago. That was one of the, one of the first numbers. And then why it was deviated from that, I don't know.
And is it pretty typical to put that increase towards the base versus like when they go from year seven to eight, they're not getting a four percent increase at that point from what they're raising?
Right, exactly. It's always done toward the base.
And principals aren't typically when we've negotiated the potential increase on base with the teachers. Principals aren't automatically included in that.
It's difficult because they, they do apply to the CBA with, with, if there's a percentage increase, they do usually get that. They don't necessarily have to. And in the past, it's really, principals are only applied to the CBA. It seems that inconsistent amount. And so you, to answer your question, yes, that's been what, what has been practiced in the past.
That's a board decision, though. I think we started talking about it in the last contract negotiation, you got three.
The last one, we didn't end up doing it in the last.
Yeah, you got admin, you got classified, you got certified, certified negotiate, and then what has been past practice is that whatever the certified negotiate applies to the base for admin and classified. You don't have to do that as a board, though.
I don't want to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Richard, does, does admin get a pension through the TRS?
Through TRS, yes, but not from the district, no.
Well, we don't, they're just.
Right, but admin, what I'm saying is admin does in Calispel.
Oh.
They have their own separate retirement benefit, yes.
Plus TRS?
My question is just a clarifying question. The base of the principal's salary in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year is the same as what you were projecting for twenty twenty-four.
Yes, yep, there's no increase on the, that's, yeah, no.
And it's just the, like, the steps that you were.
Yep, literally, it's just taking up the steps and looking at how to make it consistent.
Yeah, that makes sense. Just wanted to.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Any other comments there?
Let me verify, Jeff, I captured, it's a trustee Meredith asked if it's possible with the comparable sounds at similar schools. Are, are you, would you like?
I think that'd just be, you know, if, if there's any data available, you know, it'd be nice to see as well when we consider these type of decisions, adjustments.
Can you think of any school districts you would like to see?
I think, I think looking at Calispel's applicable.
In Big Fork.
The ones, yeah, the ones.
The Summers Lakeside title one?
No, I don't think they're full.
They might be, they might be good ones to look at because they're kind of similar sized and not tighter.
But Calispel, Good Fork, Summers Lakeside, I think, Richard, I could work to try and contact the schools and forward the information to you guys. Is that okay? Is there any other school?
No, I'm just, yeah, just if we could get a handful. And I think KMS is a good one to just recognize. The, the A scale there, it's, it's, yeah, it's a different school, but it's
It, it is.
Definitely a competitor.
I have KMS's information right, right here. This is as of a few years ago. And I don't think there'd be breaking anything, but is that, is it okay to read someone's salary if it's government?
I wouldn't say their name.
Yeah, right. I think, yeah. So anyway, the, that position with eleven years was one twenty-two at base. And that was for two hundred and twenty-three days. And then there's a four oh three B contribution of eight point five percent on top of that. Insurance contribution of ninety-two hundred. So the total compensation there is one forty-four.
Okay, there are two other variables in the principal contracts. One is days, and ours are written on a two-ten basis, and the other thing is personal days. So those are other things when you look at the contracts you need to consider because it's, it's worth money. People, if they don't use their personal days at the end of the year, can cash those out based on their daily rate, which is why your days on the contract matters, too. So, so other, other things to think about with the typical contracts.
Yep.
But I, I think we can actually ask for the salary schedules from these other schools, too. Richard's giving me specific job tiles, but we can ask for those.
Yeah, I have all the KPS admins. It's, I think it's public records, yeah. Which, you know, the I mean, it's, it, basically, it's, it's also about the other compensation, too, that we can't provide. And so, you know, that's the, yeah, anyway.
It seems like their salary schedules would be most helpful, you know, just since that's what we're developing.
Yeah, we're trying to kind of, I guess, adjust ours maybe eventually, but right now, with this, the lowest compensated principal there is an assistant at the middle school of one oh four total compensation. And then the lowest elementary admin is one twenty-one total compensation. So just to give you some, you know, reasons why I, when I say what I do, that, that's, that's why.
One twenty-one in how many years?
Total compensation for one twenty-one, let me get it. That is
That's total.
Six years.
So that's going to include their benefits, too.
That includes, exactly, that includes their insurance benefit, the four oh three B contribution. Yeah. I mean, yep, that's the insurance contribution, the four three B, and they also get a cell phone thing, just like, you know, we could, they get mileage. But anyway, I think they set that up and I don't, you know, yeah.
These figures that we have here that don't include our insurance that we do provide.
Correct.
So it looks better, ours actually look better than theirs, including the insurance.
Yeah.
As they do.
Yep.
And they're on a two, two hundred and thirty-five day contract, that's probably.
Two fifteen is there.
Oh, they're two fifteen.
And then the
And we're two ten, right?
Yes. And then the other, it depends on the, the building, but that's a two twenty-three is the, is the other, is the middle school contract.
Okay.
And what's their retirement percentage?
It depends. I think it depends on the person.
Got it.
Maybe, I don't know what they do there. This is all different.
Got it.
So just for follow-up, I've got comparable salaries and salary schedules at Calispel, Big Fork, and Summers Lakeside. So we'll search like that. So you guys can look at.
They'll be on, on the agenda next month, too.
As an action.
Okay.
Yeah, I can share this document with you that has, I mean, it's just not updated, three years old, but it, it does have Whitefish, Columbia Falls, Lake Side. And Calispel and Evergreen.
It's probably not lowers.
Yeah, probably, yeah. So with all that said.
Any more than will we get more information than before we vote? Right. Now we need, are we going to do our tour?
Yeah.
Until five o'clock, so we got about half an hour
Yeah.
to tour the school and, well, maybe a little bit before that.
Did we say where we need to go, or do we have?
Oh, we're just going to take a look down at the elementary specifically, at some flooring and some holes in the ceiling.
So I'm going to pause the video, and since these things are supposed to be recorded, I just wanted the commentary on the record as to what we're going to go look at, in case anyone.
Oh, oh, thank you.
See what I'm saying? So, yeah, so it's
Yeah.
Elementary school and
And possibly look at the middle school if we have time.
Gotcha.
Okay.
All right, from positive.
Minutes early so we can do that information items just before we reset.
Yeah, that, I can make that two minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
And call the session back to order after we had a little tour of the school, and we'd like to make some comments regarding that.
Yeah, we took a look at some flooring, specifically up in the north part of the building, where you can see it's kind of cracking and, and peeling up. We looked at leaking the ceiling or the, where there was a leak, and it's been mitigated, but there's still, you know, open ceiling. We looked at some doors and some issues with closing. Some of the doors have, you have to pull shut in order to make sure they close because sometimes they just decide they're not going to do it. We looked at the south basement and looked at some of the old things down there, specifically a water heater. And it's unfortunate that we can't use that as a storage area because it will get water in it from time to time. So it's not good to put some belongings down there. There's likely higher than zero chance it'll flood it.
Okay, thank you. I guess anybody else have any comments about the tour? Okay. Mark, would you like to order the information item, the election update?
Yeah, just wanted to give everybody a quick update on where we are with the election. So I, I published an email last week letting everybody know that the trustee election has been canceled because there were two, two people applying, and that's Laurel and Mark, and there were two openings, so that they are going to be assumed most positions by acclamation at the next board meeting, next board meeting. Remember, it's going to be kind of a beefy one in May. We're going to have your organizational meeting where we'll swear in the new trustees. And then you guys are going to do, you're going to nominate a, a chair, a vice chair, and then you're going to choose a business clerk or business manager and clerk next year. So all right, so that, so that, it's been posted to the newspaper that the trustee election has been canceled, and we have the legal copy of that because that's required by Montana State Code. The next thing that happened today, based on the state schedule, is that we noticed the annual election. So that's being put in the paper on the twelfth, so that's Friday this week. And that says that we're having a general fund levy election as well as a tech fund levy election. So both of those have been done. Other things that are happening right now, we've gotten all of, we spent about four, almost five thousand dollars on printing costs and material costs. We've got all of the envelopes in my office. If anyone wants to see what forty-five hundred envelopes look like, it's, there are boxes in my office that have the registered voters printed on them. Today, we got the ballots printed up, and we're preparing those with stamps on them that says official ballot. We should have all of them, and I've got the instructions I'm picking up tomorrow. That means by tomorrow, we'll have everything we need, and the WBTA will talk a little bit about what we're doing. They're going to help us with stuffing party next week, where we're going to take these on Monday and Tuesday assemblies, these things. Once they get done, once the, all the materials get done, I take them back to Instaprints on Thursday, the eighteenth, Thursday, the eighteenth. And then per our plan, they are published with the state, we mail everything out on Friday the nineteenth. So that's when all our ballots are shot out there. And so that hopefully gives everyone a context. We've hit, we've hit every date. I swear we will not miss a date on this election, and I think there's been great involvement in terms of engagement and in terms of understanding what the amounts are, the rationalization, rationalization behind the amounts. And Laurel's done an amazing job on leading us with some of the videos. So looking forward to what happens next in terms of the engagement steps. Any questions on how we're doing on the election? We're on target. And then the, basically, then we get ballots back until May seventh and two o'clock on Tuesday, May seventh. I've got three judges already confirmed to show, to show up and help us count ballots. At the end of that evening, I issue a preliminary results and then, and notify the newspaper and tell, tell the board what the results were. And then it's not until the following Monday during the board meeting that you canvass the election results and then make it a fit complaint as an official, what the official results are, so you want to ask questions. Okay?
Thank you, Mark, for being on top of this. Something, there's a lot of deadlines. A lot, a lot of particulars. Thank you. All right, so with that, I think we will just have a little break here, and before the board, official board meeting begins at five fifteen. So at five fifteen, we'll come back and begin the regular board meeting. Okay, we're going to call to order the regular board meeting of the West Valley School Board, April eighth, twenty twenty-four. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by board chair. Citizens may comment on items relating to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comments portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are unacceptable at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order to lengthy breach of personal privacy rights, abuse of seen, arrow, and otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. Let's stand for the pledge.
By twain. Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving my line, I'll go for that to the consent agenda. Entertaining a motion to accept the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Right, is there any concession? Right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Stay unanimous. Stay unanimous. The approval of bills and financial update, Mark?
Go ahead and take a look, so if you look at the attached, um, file, the link for approved bills, that'll be a, a sense of what the bills are, take maybe a couple minutes to look at that, I mean, if you have any questions on those.
I did have a little question about that, the Christian parish Superman presentation, I, I see it's.
That's a great question.
It's later on in the agenda, um, for somebody to explain it.
Um, yeah, so that, so Ken Burns, um, uh, organized a, uh, I guess, a rap artist, you wanna say, something like that, on Monday, to come in and he scheduled him, he's Native American individual and, uh, and, uh, it's part of our overall program for Indian education for all, so you're clear about I E F A, Indian Education for All. And the school gets allotted a certain amount of money, uh, to, to, uh, to stay consistent with the constitution, actually, of Montana, and then also there's some requirements that, uh, a certain amount of time is dedicated toward.
Oh.
Um, e- e- educating about Native American, uh, Native American culture, and, and, like, every teacher is supposed to be doing that in the classroom, and Ken did sort of a bigger event, and so that's what that paid for, so. I think it's around seven, eight thousand dollars a year, could be as high as ten that we have, that's allotted from the state of Montana.
Okay, so this thirty-seven, this thirty-seven doesn't come out of our budget, it's.
No, no, it comes, it comes out of your general, it comes out of your general fund, this is, this is a piece of your general fund, and again, the state gives you, I think in our case it's seven to eight grand, it's something like that, that they've given us for this year, and if you don't use it, you lose it. So, and, and then they, they are gonna, the O P I is gonna be auditing more intensely to make sure that there is conformance to some of the requirements around, um, Indian education for all, so.
Have we used any of this before, Mark?
In the past, yeah, yeah, we code, uh, certain teachers', uh, salaries to, to it, in, in part, so behind the scenes, what you see in the payroll, if you look at the coding structure, then a certain, um, certain teachers will have a, a certain percentage of their salaries go to Indian education. Tina has part of her salary go to Indian education for, uh, Alicia does. Um, because they are in charge of monitoring and watching the seat, making sure that we are adhering to those requirements for the state, so. And that's, so we say, hey, five percent of their salary, I think it is roughly, is, is what goes to that, so.
Which supports monitoring.
And Ken, Ken has a larger portion of his, because he takes on some leadership roles in that area, and then this, this specific event, sometimes we'll buy, um, maps of, uh, of the tribal, uh, legions, and so, and that will buy, so that goes to the materials, but it gets coded to that, uh, to Indian education for all.
Then I have a question, the election, maybe envelopes? And address printing for three thousand four hundred?
Yeah.
Now that, of course, does not include postage, right?
Correct, it does not.
So this is just envelopes?
Yeah, there are three envelopes that we have, we have the outside mailing envelope, the inside one, um, that voters return their ballots with, and there's the secrecy one that goes inside of that. That money goes to buy, buy the materials, which are those envelopes, as well as the printing that goes on the return, on, on, on the outside envelopes that get sent to the voters.
So then that's part of the cost, postage will be added.
Correct, at the very end, I'll take it, and we have a bulk mailing rate that, uh, with our account number that's been printed on the outside envelope. I'm sorry, the, the inside, outside envelope, yeah, for the blue one.
Right.
Um, C S C T, April matching payment, what is?
So we, um, we participate, that's how we, uh, that's how we do s- part of our special needs program. Um, so, what, it's, it's a program that a lot of, some schools do this completely on their own, other schools go through, um, this organization. Um, what to supply and pay for services, we have to put it, put up a certain amount of money that shows that it comes from the general fund. Um, and that's what we do on a monthly basis, we then get that reimbursed to us. Um, and then we pay for the rest, uh, out of it, uh, so, so I, I pay that bill on a monthly basis, we get that back. And then the rest of it, we, we owe, so.
Okay, it's school basement will help.
Okay, got it, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second. Is there any more discussion about the bill? I guess I have a little question just about the water testing service. Uh, is that just July and April, we paid that thousand dollars to have that replay, we, um, tested the water tester?
So that, I was surprised how late those dates were on the bills, uh, so I think, when I called it, she said she was doing some catch-up. So I guess, okay, and I think that factored in, there was a facilities inspection that happened over spring break. And so she, uh, when Phil and I contacted her, their water testing, um, s- uh, services, she's, she said, I'll, I'll get you all these results, and then she did her backlog of billing there, is, is what it is, and normally that's, I think it's on quarterly. I don't know, I, that's not my lane, I'm not sure exactly. So those catch-up billing for water testing.
It looks like it's quarterly here, you got.
Yeah, I think it normal, I think, I think we're supposed to be doing it quarterly.
So we're gonna look for another.
It's bacterial. We, I think that, what, what'd you say, what was the question?
Well, this is only a quarter.
You know, that, that has a number of quarters in there, I, I, I would have to get, I don't wanna misspeak, I would have to get you what the, we, we test for, uh, lead, um, and copper, and then we also test for bacterial count. The bacterial count, I think, is what is done quarterly, and if the lead is done on a, I think, I'd, I'd, I'd have to go off and get you more information around, exactly, but that's Phil's area, I'm fine.
And that's required. Yes.
Yeah, when they come and inspect the kitchen, they wanna see what are your bacterial counts and make sure that it's, everything is under control.
Okay, I just don't remember seeing that. Okay, is there any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Stay unanimous. I never think we have, um.
Quick financial update here, yes, so I think, the last couple meetings, we've talked about fund balancing, we've done some education on basic, um, about funds where we code information, I think we're getting, beginning to strip, oh, wouldn't it just die in a minute? Um, so I think we're to the point where we can have pretty efficient financial updates, and, and again, giving feedback as to whether or not this is, meeting the need, um, and keeping everybody up to speed. This one, and this one, I pared this down, and I think this is what we're gonna go with on a regular basis, so I've got year-over-year monthly spending, this is the, are the red bars, lower than the blue bars game for us, and, and so, so this year we're trying to, um, make sure that we get four hundred thousand dollars out of cumulative spending, that's that line graph that I'll show you next, and, uh, there's some pretty good news there right now, keep your fingers crossed, but we're at least trending in the right direction. Um, then I show you budget versus actual expenditures, um, and stuff, this is the one where, you know, we look at, we're, you know, fifty-six percent of the way through the year and we're fifty-four percent spent, and so we say, okay, we're at least on target, we're on track with that. And then the last piece of the financial, um, update that we really need to keep our eye on is our cash balances and our funds, and that's, so the, the county acts as our bank, and we wanna make sure that we have healthy enough, uh, fun, fun balances to prepare bills in the different funds, and so I'll show you all that today. Um, so, the first one is Richard's famous face, with the red bars are lower, lower than the blue bars, we're doing pretty good, so you should feel pretty good about this so far this year. Uh, this is a lot of hard work, um, so just to show what's going on, um, so over here, uh, this is March, right? I look back one month, because I, uh, we don't have everything, we don't run the payroll, doesn't get run to the twenties each month, so you have to look backwards one month. Um, last year we spent four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, that's what this blue bar represents, and this year we spent four hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That represents about a forty-one thousand dollar reduction in spending. Part of that's timing, and you're gonna see some of that come back to us in April, but for the most part, if you look back, it's a pretty good trend, right? I mean, every month except for September, where we got a little crazy with, uh, some critical items, um, we averaged, this was a twenty-five thousand dollar difference, that was a twenty-one thou, twenty-three thousand dollar difference, and then December was a fourteen thousand dollar difference. So we're picking up anywhere between fifteen and, you know, uh, thirty thousand dollars a month. If that keeps playing out, then we should have, we should be able to, um, avoid a budget amendment. I talked to Cindy Foley today though, and she said, boy, you're better off, you know, she, she said, well, I, I, my words, not hers, you're better to, uh, have and not need than need and not have, right, so she says, she recommends that we start a, um, budget, that I start a budget amendment process. There are a couple steps that you have to get approval from O P I, at least let them know what's going on, whether you execute it or not, it's not that important, but we haven't told you in May to, uh, to actually declare and execute a budget, we cannot over spend our budget, though, that's just the deal, unless we have an amendment placed.
Are you, are you gonna do then?
I'll go ahead and get those, get that started, um, before May, so we have it in our back pocket, and we can pull the trigger if we need to, because you, I'll talk about a couple things that are still at risk here, uh, but we do have two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in reserves that we can draw on, so. Um, and I, but the way it's looking right now, I'm cautiously optimistic. So, any questions, um, how we're doing? If you take all these bars and add them together, right, the blue ones, or the blue line, and the red ones are the red line. And our, our, the, the objective, what we're trying to do here is to reduce by four hundred thousand dollars so that we can, uh, make payroll in June, and right now we're sitting in a, in a, in a difference of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, which is really good, right? So, um, I, 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 I would predict this next month, April probably about twenty thousand dollars fade, May, twenty to thirty, Richard and I turned off spending, uh, the middle, middle of February, so, but there's no discretionary spending, which makes some people kind of cranky, but that's, it makes other people, you know, happy, so we can enter payer bills, so in the end, but hopefully we can make payroll. Um, so that looks pretty good right now, as long as this yellow line is above the dotted green line, we shouldn't have to do a budget amendment, so you can see the trend in the direction. Any questions on this? Although, I know in the past, it leveled on way too long. Um, on this one, this one, so this is the one that's that, that you and I talked about, um, this one shows on the, uh, where you commit what you spent during the month. So that four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars is what the red bar was before, in, in the check, right, the very top is the general fund. The left column has, uh, the different funds, there's general fund, transportation, bus depreciation, food services, blah, 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 right? So the one we focused on is the general time, says we spent four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, um, year-to-date, we've spent three point two million. Uh, there's our favorite number that's tattooed on all of our arms, the five point oh five seven million is our budget, right? And so that, that hasn't been adjusted, if we ask for a budget amendment, that column, I think it will change it up, that hasn't changed, neither one of those this entire year. And so we still have one point eight four million dollars to spend for the rest of the year, we're sixty-four percent spent, um, through the year, and that's pretty close where we need to be right now. So, that's pretty good, and then you can get a sense of what's going on down here, just a couple things, I think Mark Wadi asked in the past, uh, a little bit about food service, right, some of these funds we're gonna have to start looking at when it comes to budget times. Uh, because, uh, for example, we're gonna take a look at fees, we're gonna start talking about fees during our work session at the next, um, meeting, we're gonna look at athletic fees, we're gonna look at, um, potentially lab fees, we're gonna definitely look at lunch fees, because if, if you, if the, if the, if the food service account is not self-funded, that's where you take it, you take it out of your general fund, and we don't wanna do that, so we wanna make sure that we're charging an appropriate amount of money. Um, for, uh, lunch fees, um, and we have, you know, free lunches, reduced lunches, and full, full cost lunches, so we'll take a look at that. For the number of years from when I can tell, since we adjusted this lunch phase, and probably it's time, we should look at it. Alright, so, if you look at the spending overall, it, it's, um, you know, it's, it, 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 it looks like it's under control. Transportation, um, just enough, just another note, that, that second line there, um, our five-year contract is running out this year, and I'm gonna be sitting with, Tre- Treasure State on Monday to renegotiate our contract, and we'll be, the, the, the May meetings could have a lot, lot, so, we'll be talking about that. Any questions on this?
On the, uh, the building reserve fund, so, uh, a minimal amount committed year-to-date, obviously. You know, we have the H V A C, kind of deferred maintenance going on there, is there, is there any planned spending in that this year, or?
No, that's a good question, we have not, we don't have any plan, and we haven't voted on that. What Richard and I are talking about is to help provide a bit of a cushion next year in the general fund, is that, uh, O P I allows you to, uh, book, uh, as part of the school safety program, you can book, um, a counselor, or counselor salaries to that. And that's one of the decisions that the board's gonna have to take a look at, um, if we, we would potentially forego our ability to, uh, take our large project, but what we would do is be able to pay for, uh, our counselor, uh, counselor salary out of that fund. So, yes, but just to answer your question, um, that there's no plans, I mean, that should end, uh, if that should end at about a hundred, hundred and seventy, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars this year, based on all the revenues we're gonna take in there, we don't have any plans spending.
Was it, uh, was the reserve balance in that fund zero at the beginning of the year?
No, no, it was ninety, I think, I think we're picking up that ninety thousand after year, something like that. Okay, good question. Yeah, that's one thing we're gonna have to look at, so, you know, so as you, as you're looking around, and you're taking your, 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 uh, school tours, you know, ask questions, but, where's the big capital project here, can we afford it, you know, out of the building fund, the other option, as we've talked about, is that CapEx, um, program. So, if, if we want, but you still have to be able to sell a story in advance if you can pay that out of your general fund. Good, any, any other questions? The, uh, next last slide is so small, this is ridiculous, when I get a blow this thing up. Um, this one shows what your, uh, cash balance is with the, um, with the, uh, county. Um, and if you remember, we were negative a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in that general fund coming into this year. Um, and yeah, with the help of Cindy Foley, um, and it's a lot of hard work, we figured out, so untangle that, uh, we're now sitting in pretty healthy cash, cash positions in all, all our funds, we got over half a million dollars in the general fund. And you can see, you know, we get, we get revenue from, uh, from taxes, and then the payout, all of, all of the, uh, everything that we need to spend um, out of the general fund, um, yeah, so that gives you, and, and as long as you're positive, and your fund balance is, you're getting interest, and that interest, I think, afforded you, uh, I was surprised, it's over five percent.
Yeah, so it's, it's a direct pass-through, like, the rate that they get on their accounts, so, so it's, that's.
It's really nice. Good job.
You don't wanna not get interest.
Yeah, exactly, you're walking away with five percent, if, if you don't keep up, and really, this is us, you know, keep American, uh, our finances under control, and then communicating with the county what we're doing, so where, what should be in here, so if, uh, we do a journal voucher, so we spend out of, of, um, the miscellaneous fund, and I don't, and it's, it actually goes to cover here, and I don't tell them that, one fund can go negative, that's what happened at the beginning this year, there was a bunch of journal vouchers that did not get communicated to the county, that cost us, so, uh, some ten, twenty thousand dollars in interest, which is not good.
Does that interest go into, back into the general fund?
It goes back into this fund that, that the money's associated, yeah, so I balance that and bases, and, you know, that's one of the line items that, you know, you look at what your revenues are, and one of them is interest that comes to it.
That's great news.
Yeah, I, I, I'm feeling better about where we are, um, you know, we're still, you know, this number, I'd feel better if that were eight hundred thousand dollars versus five hundred, because we're gonna get kind of low when it comes time to make payroll at the end of the year, so. Okay. But, um, last thing I wanna do is just sort of, you know, uh, break this out again, again, as long as, um, just continue concern that, you know, uh, we need to have this year-over-year savings target of about four hundred thousand, I moved that up from the quarter million up to four hundred thousand, to cover the hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall that I was looking at for the, um, June payroll, and that we've reported on, so I think we're trying pretty well there. I, I'm gonna get the budget amendment started, the paperwork, so we have it in our back pocket, in case we need to pull that trigger, we have until we have the negative to do that. And the other June is when it closes up, we're gonna do the T F S for us, and the trustees, and I'll just say. Um, the other thing I just want to put in people, put, put it out there as a matter of record, is that back in October, I received, um, two fines from the, um, IRS associated with W two files in two thousand twenty-one, they claimed that, they're, they're not sure what we did, but they've claimed either we did not provide employees with W two, but I know everyone here got W two, so we know that everyone got W two, there was a problem when we switched over to Black Mountain about electronic upload as to whether or not that made them on time, and, uh, I believe I've supplied them with the right, um, documentation, they keep sending me letters about every sixty days, and we still don't know another sixty days to investigate this, this has been going on since October, and this is, this is material to our financial results, it's eighty-four thousand dollars right now. Eighty-one thousand dollars plus right now, interest accruing, and so, um, yeah, so I've got an appointment again, about every other month ago, to meet the IRS and go, what are we doing here, but I've given you everything you need, and so, um, yeah, so that's, so, so, hopefully that won't bite us, but, uh, yeah. So, I'm scheduling the next week for you guys, too.
So if you like, I mean, based on what they're claiming was done, do you feel like you have, that was supporting documentation to say how it was?
It was tricky, I, it, because Black Mountain, it is the first year we're using Black. It was tricky, I, because Black Mountain, it is the first year we're using Black Mountain. Trying to come up with, and what 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 you do is you upload, and the the I R S has an electronic filing system that you have to upload all your information to. You do your quarterly taxes there, and then also you have to prove you've done your W two, you tend to minimize. That documentation was not easy to find, and I I had to trace it down on through our email system, through Betta, Serena Nelson, if you remember, she was our business manager way back then. Um I think I got it, um but that's my, well, that's why I'm trying to talk to the I R S, isn't, is this the documentation you guys need or want? Because tell me now, but they're not getting back and saying, yeah, that answers your question. So the problem is the local agent doesn't know exactly what the case investigator is asking, she's, she just kind of handles my paperwork, I just file it, and then. I haven't heard back from this guy, we'll do this, say, you know, another sixty days, there's another sixty days, so. Okay, so that's that. All right, cause for, and again, if there's anything else that that we can look at, but I think in perhaps fund balancing is the other thing we want to look at. Uh if I can figure out a good way to visualize that for us.
Thank you very much. Visuals are great. All right, okay, uh we'll go on to correspondence. Uh we didn't, we don't have anybody requesting to address the board, so we'll go on to the P T O report, in Julie.
For the record, one of the papers I'm passing out has a typo, but that's why I printed it out, so that I can really read it, then have my eyes jump around in the screen. So before this actually gets published out, um we will fix that typo. I spelled Adam Sandler wrong.
Oh, no, that's in the record here.
Spelling is not high, high, uh top, top thing. Um so these are just for teacher appreciation, um it is fast approaching. So we are doing every day, there is, uh we're going back to the nineties for our theme. And so every day, there is gonna be some kind of goodie or some kind of lunch or breakfast provided to all staff. And since we do it as a staff appreciation, that catches everybody instead of trying to just do the teachers, but also then the parents and everybody feel loved. So those are the days, we're also gonna do a spirit day, uh spirit week for the school, just to show the teachers some love. So if you're a teacher, close your ears, but like on the same, they're gonna, that we're encouraging students to write a note of appreciation. So we're gonna be sending home a paper for them to write a little note to a teacher, pastor, president, um just trying to show some love to um. Our staff and our teachers, especially as we end a school year, and we always know it's busy and chaotic towards the end of the year.
And then on Thursday, we have the WOW program, um donated lunch for all, all staff members in the school.
So they'll be coming and just chatting, and they really want to help and give back to our school, they really love our school and our students. So the teachers, we sent an email that they'll be just thanking them during the lunch day, but also asking if there's things they need or want or desire for their classrooms for the school. Cause they want to give and give and give, so they can take that opportunity to see, you know, what what they might need as well, so.
Um our next P T O meeting is tomorrow at uh Big Mountain Cider Works. Um we're um providing appetizers for anyone who wants to come join our trivia team, so apparently we'll be on Tuesday.
We're taking it, we're taking it out of the building to see if we can get a little bit more traction and get people to want to come. It's during dinnertime, so hey, why not, right? So we're gonna do some appetizers and support a local business within our district, so we're gonna give it a try, right? Um we had a dine out at Five Guys um last month that we had lots of participation in. I unfortunately don't have a number because the guy at Five Guys keeps giving me the runaround of calling us back. So we don't check supposedly in the mail coming to us, but I don't know the grand total of that. Um but on a positive note, we have another one in a couple of weeks um to help just with extra funding towards the end of the year.
And then um our next event is donuts with grownups for um kid to fourth grade, and that'll be.
Next, it's Friday the nineteenth.
Um and so kids will be able to bring in their siblings and grownups, and we'll be providing coffee, juices, and donuts.
And we have, and we had to send out a nasty do not, you're way past the deadline email, because we're past five hundred uh donuts at this point. So that's exciting and awesome, but I only made an order for five hundred, so gotta call Rose's back and up our order. So thankfully, we have a little logo room with that order date, so, so yeah. Well, and we're having fun, we're helping with support of the levy stuff, so we're just continuing on with that stuff, getting all the paperwork finalized. So that we, we stay in compliance with what we need to do to help support you guys as well, so just keep letting us know what else we can do to help. Um with the different activities going on, so.
All right, thank you.
Do you guys have any questions or anything?
Probably not. We're just in.
Oh, I know, there is one other thing, we did start as well, sorry, I forgot. As part of the teacher presentation, we have a staff sunshine binder that will be going in the office. That we asked all staff to fill out um like their favorite things to eat, or classroom needs, or desires, or wants, or where they like to eat out at. That then parents that want to give a gift or like for pick for our day, for our V I P service. We went and bought, while we're on the process of buying all their favorite snacks, and we're gonna deliver it to them that day. So just a very personalized thing, so we're gonna have this in the office that people can take a snapshot of, so.
Cool idea.
It'll be fun. Okay, now I'm done.
Thank you very much, positive report, oh, great, okay, um. Then the West Valley Teachers Report, do we have report from Molly and Bonnie?
Molly's at with her kid sick stomach, and Bonnie's not here, so I think it's the Sarah's, is it the Sarah show?
Update that we made a decision with our committee to keep the Blue Cross insurance. And I sent a survey out to all staff uh with five different choices of deductibles. And we are gonna do a two thousand deductible, um which we had before, a five thousand which we had before, but now it's gonna cost uh thirty three dollars. Um and then they chose the five thousand slash sixty nine hundred for eighty twenty. And we had thirty three responses, so I think that's almost everyone who's on the insurance made a response, and uh those were our three choices, so we're going with them. And I gave that to Mark.
Yeah, good, good job, Joe.
Given to Peggy or Molly?
Um well, what's gonna happen is that these, an action item tonight is uh looking, and so Mark, thanks, thanks Mark Wadi and Lowell. Uh Eppen for sitting on our health insurance committee, you guys saw what happened, and so out of this, one of the action items gonna come up is. Um consideration for approval of Blue Cross Blue Shield for next year with these three plans, we only are allowed to offer three plans. And Joe did a great job of canvassing everybody, right, Joe, it was classified answer, okay?
Yeah.
So yeah, so thanks to Joe on that, and um yeah, these three plans, this is cost neutral to the district for next year, so it's the same six thousand dollars per person. And so what they were doing is going with the low deductible, same plan as this year, and then a higher deductible, which would be cost neutral to the employees. Where they have five thousand dollar deductible, and then the nineteen hundred between five thousand and sixty nine hundred is an eighty twenty split between employee and the um. And the uh and and the insurance coming after that, that that you've met your pocket amount, and so then. Uh Blue Cross Blue Shield picks up everything else, those would be the three that we're in offer, and we're looking to do uh open enrollment that. That's starting the day after our May board meeting, so probably two weeks, hopefully. Good job, Joe, thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Okay. Um the other thing that we were just going to share is kind of our levy marketing update from the union. Um we are ordering four hundred postcards, thank you Marilyn and family for volunteering to be the face of the postcard. Jack said he is now famous, so if they play the autograph, I'm second rate. Um we, these will be handwritten postcards, we have two um days that we'll be writing them, so this Thursday and Friday. Um the first two hundred will go out to fifty five plus most likely to vote, we were able to get a list. And so we'll handwrite those and send those out, and then those, that's our first goal, and if we meet that, then the next two hundred will just go out to likely to vote people. But we have some messages that we'll write and send those out hopefully around the same time the ballots go out, if not a little before, so they're kind of arriving hand to peanut, is the idea. Um and then we will be helping with the ballot stuffing parties next week, we are ready to go for that. And then the open house is on the horizon as well, being a presence there, so that's kind of where we're at with the art, this is Thursday.
Thank you. That sounds great, too, okay, thanks very much, uh anybody else with their teachers?
Just a reminder, our next union negotiation with those guys is on the seventeenth after school, okay? So we have that coming up, and I think I talked to Gretsch, I think you got, I think they're looking to maybe. Preliminary proposals and then do the next, sort of block out the next, that two Wednesdays after that. Because if you think about it, that's another thing that's gonna be on the May agenda is the uh C B A to for consideration approval, so. I'll be taking off notes and updating that draft uh union, then I think you guys, you guys look at it and ratify it, and then it goes to the board, and then they approve it, and then we're off. There's a lot that's gonna be happening between now and May.
We need to thank Jeff and Steph for being on that negotiating committee and spending the hours and all the teachers. Getting that C B A ready for the next May meeting, so we can get that done, so, thank you. Um, any further discussion there? I'll go on to the principal reports, yeah.
So I will start with testing, we're actually in the testing uh windows now, and so this week. The fifth and the eighth graders will be testing in science, taking their annual exam. Uh fifth graders are tested on content from elementary, and then the eighth graders are tested on the middle school con- uh content. And then all of that is on digital platforms. Um starting the fifteenth uh of April, then the third through eighth grade will be testing and taking the mass test. So that replaces the S back, we've talked a bit about that, and so the Montana. Align to standards test, I think they picked a crazy moniker for that one, but anyways. So um grades three through eight will be taking that, and because we're um late adopters at that on the pilot. We will be taking that um in in clusters, so um I believe that math will have twelve testlets. And E L A will have seven testlets, and then they'll have the anchor test that will along with that. And so they'll be taking that in their elementary classrooms, or just in their math or E L A classes as they would be in rotation normally. It's not going to take a whole rewritten schedule for that, so I'm looking forward to those through uh April through May.
All right, um our elementary math night is coming up on April twenty fifth, so we're looking forward to that and kind of starting to plan. The games and um food and all of the things to get people in the work for that. Um and then we also are currently in spirit week, which is why it looks like this at a board meeting. Uh so we've got lots of fun dress up days this week ahead for the whole school, K eight, so, yeah. And then um we are partnering with the Flathead County Health Department to uh get people opportunities to get sports, physicals, and immunizations. So we have some dates we include in the newsletter and on our Facebook page um for May fifteenth and twenty third. They are free walk-ins at the Flathead County Health Department uh for this spring. And then I organized them to be on campus here on in August, so we already have somebody that comes in uh that they do sports, physicals. So they're gonna be here that same day for the whole day to do immunizations uh for kids that need it as well. Um and then also, we had been talking with Logan Health on opening up a mobile clinic, and it was supposed to be um up and running in November, and some stuff happened with them. And so we just got um in touch with them now, and they are gonna start on April thirtieth with us. So we're kind of communicating some of the details and uh scheduling and where they're gonna be at our parking lot and all of those things, but they are. Ready to, ready to join us, so that's exciting, yeah.
And April assemblies in the middle school uh for fifth through eighth graders, we had one of the best assemblies I think we've ever had for a guest speaker. We had um Christian takes the gun, and he's from the Pro Agency originally, and we funded his visit um with the I E F A money. With the Indian Education for All, and he had a really positive message about um just making really good choices and being respectful. And of course, he um is a hip hop artist, he did several different genres and encouraged um students to listen to all kinds of different things, they don't need to be exactly. Which is what he, with what he was presenting, but he um got all of our teachers up and dancing, and it was very, very.
Except you didn't dance.
I do have a bribe tape. Very, it was, it was just really great, and it was the first time that we had, we had the fifth through eighth graders all in the gym, and they all fit into the, into the bleachers. And so we didn't know if they would, if everybody's present, it's kind of iffy, and so they were able to, we brought everybody out, it was a really, a really neat thing, and. I'm really glad that the school supported bringing him in for that message.
So we uh are in the process of planning our next assembly, and clearly we have a lot to live up to, and after that. But we have been working on our Warrior Way traits, and so this will be our last big assembly of the year on courage. So our leadership team is meeting this week to plan that out and uh looking forward to that one.
Our P I R um training, I'm just, just a little recap of that from April first. So we had all of the teaching staff, the certified staff, and the parent staff was here for a day of training, and we um. Broke it up into three different trainings, one of them was for land school and infinite campus, so um for that presentation, um. Of course, the internet went down that morning. Part of it, the internet was down, they were able to share some, um just through speaking through it, but then it did come back up later for the later sessions. And land school, you see that come up sometimes probably in your payment, so that is a soft, software monitor, monitoring system for. Um teachers can monitor what's coming up on their students' laptops, so they can control it, they can lock them into a certain site, only make certain tabs available. And they can chat back and forth with them from their station, they can freeze a student's computer from their station. So uh land school is a, is a great safety software that we're able to use and to keep kids on task. And so they learned a bit about that, and then infinite campus, which is our student information system, we use it for attendance and grading and things, but it does have a lot of other. Capabilities that we can use within it for emailing parents and things, so talked about that. And then Tonya and I presented on the Montana aligned to standards testing, and just the difference for the state of where we were at with S back, and then why the state has. Switched over to the mass testing. Um and then helped everybody with how they would now go in and take their um to be test administrators, to take their testing and get their certification to be able to administer the tests coming up. And then, yeah, and then Terry and I um did a Love and Logic uh behavior intervention support session. Um and so we got to talk about just different strategies that teachers can use with their students and. Uh gave them some resources of different tiers and um ways that they can support their students, especially next year. As um resources might not be there, personnel might not be there as much to support them, uh we want to give them ideas of things that they can do in their classrooms. Athletics for this uh final season, um it's cross-country right now, um the Special Olympians, are they doing track or bocce? Oh, oh, okay, so um we had the cross-country parents in for fifth through eighth grade this evening to decorate lockers and. Get that all festive, looking for their first meet tomorrow. The meets are here, the regular meets are all here on the West Valley campus, and then the final meet, they'll go out to some other sites and break up those grade levels, so all meets are here, posted. Hosted by the different schools at this site. And, and then the spring area games for Special Olympics is the twenty fifth and twenty sixth of April. And I don't have a lot more information on that, but it's a great thing to stop by. If you ever get a chance to go to the Special Olympians Olympics, if any of you have gone, it's really neat to see the kids there and their efforts. It is right, Katie. Yeah. You ever get a chance to go over to the high school fields and be a part of that? So that's later this month, twenty fifth and the twenty sixth.
The kids are out practicing daily too. I was out there today watching them. So they're excited. So, yeah.
And then field trips for this month, we have Mrs. Measure and the seventh grade team will be taking the entire seventh grade one day for ice skating in Whitefish. And then the sixth grade will be going to Big Creek and that'll start later this month and continue into May. We used to go on overnights and they don't do an overnight anymore. They're just going up for the day. They'll eat dinner up there and arrive back in. So every class, one home room goes each day.
And then fourth grade works with hooked on fishing and so they have a fish dissection coming up. So that's always a really great smelling one. Wanna come check that out? You'll know exactly where to go. It's pretty gnarly, but it's awesome and they love it. So, yeah.
Any questions on you?
So biggest thing recently that we've been through is hiring a couple of principals. So I did invite Nicole Capsir. Here tonight. She's on the board agenda for you to approve the hire later on. But did you wanna say anything or?
I've met a couple of you at the interview during the interview process. So I'm currently an instructional coach at Rankin. I'm very excited about the new position. Looking forward to get to know everyone and really enjoy the atmosphere that you guys have here. On the tour, your meeting, just the collaborative spirit seems like it's something that is really unique to this school district. So looking forward to getting to know everyone and getting started.
Thanks for being here. And then also finished up with the elementary principal position hiring. And again, she's on the board agenda for you later. Alicia, did you wanna say?
Should we make a motion to make her go change?
And then, yeah, just we are in full levy mode right now. So I think every minute that's not doing anything, you know, related to levy is minutes lost almost. But we've got a really, really good levy communication team going. Every person on it has put a tremendous amount of work in it. And the, the results I think are there and we're seeing a huge amount of engagement in our social media. Numbers and it's really clear. I think Kat was saying yes, or at the last meeting that any posts that we put involving kids. Gets several thousand, like five to seven thousand views and hits and posts that we have adults in gets few hundred. I think she said like, yeah, a few hundred, maybe a thousand. So it's really, you know, clear what people, you know, or who people want to hear from when we. Talk about our needs. So it's really been kind of cool to be a part of, you know, from, from this role for the first time, just to kind of see how much work. Goes into that and to see what Mark does. And so that whole process. From when we first started talking about it to now has, has really been fascinating. We are organizing a lit drop. For April sixteenth, where we're gonna walk around neighborhoods and put one of our flyers on there that, that we made on houses. We're concentrating on best bang for our buck with time. So we're looking at neighborhoods with more houses. That are closer together than really far apart. Molly Rowe and I have been kind of looking at. You know, certain neighborhoods and funny story, we spent a ton of time looking at Google Maps and we had ArcMap G I S. From the state of Montana for school districts. And we were trying to come up with neighborhoods on our own and. And it was painful, painful. And then she said, oh, I bet Brooke would know the name of this neighborhood. So she goes down and tells Brooke what we're doing. And Brooke said. Just use the bus routes. Oh, yeah. Quite a lot of times. So Brooke and her genius again shows that. So we're gonna use those and. Get that, get that figured out. And then there's an open house. On the eighteenth of April where we're inviting people in to hear a presentation and do a Q and A. For about a half an hour, one starts at four, the other one starts at six. So right now we're in the, in the midst of planning that, but we'll have teachers there. We'll have. Classified hopefully and people who can answer some questions or just, just talk. With groups, but we felt like having two different ones would maybe be a good way to get some more engagement there. We did pass our building inspection over spring break. That was. Quite an interesting process. We walked all over the building and went through all the, you know, boiler rooms and went through tons of different stuff. We, everything looks great. There's only a couple of things that we need to add, which are no big deal really for us right now. The playground was one of the areas that we will need some attention with. Some, some of the way that the wood chips are kind of flowing out of that elementary place. He made comments on that, but other than that, it's very, very well maintained. He said that you guys, again, you know, and I heard it straight from his mouth. He said, you guys have an incredible. Playground for, you know, usually what I see. So that was good to, to hear. So. And then, yeah, we're looking at staffing for next year, just kind of looking. I know the principals are working pretty hard on. Scheduling for master schedule and, and getting some of that lined out. And we continue to. Stumble through House Bill two oh three and how it relates to policy three one four one. So again, I know Mark's mentioned a couple of times at this meeting that the, the may meeting will be pretty, pretty robust. But we are getting a little bit more help with House Bill two oh three now that we've reached out to. Some different people like Bea and Beth, I'm Mo Halloran. So we can kind of get started on. On some of that because it's just so hard to form a consensus because every district has different needs. And so we can't really hitch our, her trailer to any one or the other because it's just gonna be different. So.
Guidance from O P I has been pretty limited.
Very extremely limited. Yeah. Yeah. For both business managers and how it's gonna affect them and. Just districts in general, there's no help. I mean, it's, it's really not good, but.
And what came home? Do we have to go to paper now?
So that's because every, yeah, so every single student now is gonna have to prove that they live here and redo it.
And then that census does it pull from like a school data point or does it pull from like a county data point? Where does that census?
So not sure I understand which.
There was like a census sheet.
Okay. So there's a, there's, yeah, a couple of different pieces to that. And that is that we. Will, will need verification from that. And that is pulling from our infinite campus sheet and, and we'll have to apply that then. If, you know, if anybody moves or if, you know, somebody comes into the district, they'll have to prove. You know, that they are being out of district, they'll have to prove what district they live. It's gonna be a nightmare for business managers to track because of. You know, attendance will have to be ran because it's based on enrollment. So if a student comes in. The first day and then they, they leave, you know, in a week, then we're still on the hook for that week, weeks worth of tuition. So.
And that's where we like either other school districts have to pay us or we have to pay them.
Yep. And there is a website that the Mark can put in the information that'll, that'll shoot out what the amount actually is. So. Yeah, it's really, it's a cumbersome process, but.
It's gonna be taxed and Brooks, Brooke is most of the illnesses on Brooke because she's gonna have to do attendance to the day and verify it. And then she passes. And that's what happens with all the attendance, all the enrollment, enrollment secretaries. Business manager gets it and we pay the, we pay, we, we either receive or pay the lower of the two. Tuition amounts that is part of this category. And that's all happening in July next year.
But that's counting on parents to tell us when they move.
That's why.
And so anything that Brooke sends out, we just say, thank you, Brooke. Yes, we will do this because it's gonna be really, really hard. For, for her. And so, yeah, we spent some time trying to figure out, you know, before that was sent out, what is the best way? You know, for this to be manageable. And so far, we're gonna try it and then wait until. The policy either changes or, you know, until they, they maybe take it away next legislative session, maybe they add more to it. But we're just gonna have to jump in and try, you know, and we're gonna do our very, very best to. Mitigate litigation and try not to get in a situation where we're the ones that, you know, are being challenged because I do think that. Long term, I, I feel like there's gonna be lots of litigation with this and I feel like it's gonna consolidate districts most likely. That will be us.
So Cleveland's office, what, what exact part do they have in that?
We want them just to look at our criteria and we want them to look at the policy that's set forth, you know, by the, by the state. And see if, if those things can match and the best wording to use, especially when we talk about special education caseload.
We're paying them by the hour then to help us with this.
Yeah, correct. Yep.
I'm not being, I mean.
Yeah, no, it's.
I'm not picking this part. I think it's a great idea.
We'd rather, you know, do so, you know, make sure our ducks are in a row rather than. Needing to come back and then be, be on the hook.
So is, I guess, there was one of the things I was just sitting, trying to fall asleep the other night and it occurred to me that like you'll have these families that occasionally will decide that like they're not happy with the way things are. At the school or the way you're handling and in past, they would have to pay tuition generally to go to other schools. Is that going to be potentially a burden for us? Like as parents jump different school, like jump to different schools?
Right now, we're the only district that charges out of district tuition. And it's right.
At, at the level we do.
Yeah, we've got, so we've had revenues of forty five to fifty thousand dollars this year.
But we've never had to pay for them to go elsewhere. So could that be? An event, like is that potentially an adventure for us?
That is part of the, what will get settled in July next year, right? So.
And it's all, it's in arrears too. That's another thing. But it's, it's going to come out next cycle. It's not gonna be on this year's, you know.
We, we don't budget this, this year. The only thing we do is we take that forty five to fifty thousand dollar value district tuition out of our expected revenues. But we don't, we don't budget anything. That, that's when it's gonna be kind of tricky to figure out what, what should we budget? For, for, for these fees. And so the first year is gonna be weighing out in arrears and so we'll, we'll just settle up in July.
And who's in charge of tracking where these kids all go?
Brooke, you mean here locally?
Yeah, like, I mean, if they bounce out or they bounce around to different schools.
It's up to the district clerks and then.
Okay.
So she, she says some kid moves to another school, then they decide they don't like that school. So then they go on to another school.
Right.
Does the school have to keep track of that?
They'd have to get, they'd have to be admitted and they'd have to meet all the criteria. And so it's not that any kid can go anywhere. It's, it's not like that at all. It's. That if you have this criteria, then that student in order to be enrolled has to meet all of that criteria. So there's a, there's going to be a common misconception out there. And I've heard it myself that this means that I can send my kid anywhere and have to accept them and they have to pay. But that's not what it is at all. And we know that largely in part because we get so many calls, you know, Brooke will tell you about them where they're clearly shopping for schools. And they'll say, we, you know, we heard you've got a great school, you know, my kid's on an I E P. Can I go there next year, whatever? And you're like, well, there's, there's a process. So. There's a, there's a long, you know, list of things that have to happen before that. So. I mean, and I know that the principals have dealt with that too, with emails and people asking for tours and basically saying, you know, sell me your school. And it's like, well, it's not quite how, how it is. But, but so. To be, to be honest, I, I have said, I don't know more times about this, I think, than COVID even with things. So we'll, we'll get it. It's, it's completely, you know, they're like fishing line. You just gotta untangle. So.
So are we gonna then have to set like pretty clear stipulations on? The different levels of their grade levels that we can accept? Or I mean, I'm assuming that we'll have to be very proactive in establishing.
Yeah. What that enrollment criteria is. Yeah. And part of that is percentage of total enrollment per grade level that. You know, doesn't go beyond what is considered, you know, accreditation wise for the state.
So the potential lawsuit, be some old kid that decides they want to come here and we say, well, according to our, our, our standards, you're not eligible. And the mom says, I don't care. I'm wanting there anyway. So they start, they can do litigation.
Yeah. That's all I have.
End on a high note.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Then we'll go on to the action items. Action items A. Discussion and possible motion regarding recommendations to non-renew the contracts for non-tenure teachers. Lake, Milky and Rush without cause. Eight, this is the action item. So we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to not, not renew the contracts for non-tenure teachers Craig Lake, Jessica Milky and Stacy Rush without cause.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Ben Paul goes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. A consideration of recommendation and approval of contract to be hiring Nicole Capsir. But to hire Nicole Capsir as a middle school principal. Do we need a motion?
Entertain motion for that.
A motion to hire Nicole Capsir as our middle school prin- principal. I'll second it.
During discussion. Opposed in favor? Opposed? unanimous. A consideration and recommendation on approval of the contract to hire Alicia Hamel as elementary school principal.
I'll make a motion to hire Alicia Hamel as our elementary school principal.
Second, in discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous. On consideration and approval of proposed health insurance plan for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Mark, did you wanna give some?
Yeah, I think we've heard about it. The, the two things you're looking at is blue cross, blue shield. And then the three plans that Joe talked about, I kind of summarized. And then you just need to know that it's cost neutral to the school for next year, six thousand dollars.
All right. Is, is there any discussion or I guess we gotta have that as a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed health insurance plan for twenty four, twenty five school year?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous. Consideration and approval of school board levy messaging and action plan. This is that. Beautiful set of videos that Laura has done.
Yeah. So I had a great conversation with Lance Milton last week and. He brought up, you know, portions of Montanic code annotated. That basically allowed us to have greater leniency in how we communicate about the bonds or excuse me about the levy. And, you know, one of the things he really encouraged was official adoption of messaging. You know, through our webpage, the flyer that we, that we're gonna be utilizing, social media posts, and then it's particularly like video messaging. And so, you know, we have spoken at length. Over the course of the year about the needs of the school, you know, the heating system, needing to retain teachers so that we can continue to offer kids the things that they need. Both in the classroom by maintaining effective classroom sizes and then also retaining the small group learning that we've managed to keep. You know, we have discussed obviously that there have been losses around that as we have lost staff positions. But really just being able to kind of advocate for that and outline that through official messaging to the public, particularly around video. And so. I'll go up here. I'm not. I'm not gonna make you watch all the videos.
Really good.
Maybe we can. I should have brought the popcorn. Uh, but you know, and I guess one of the things that I really, really wanna stress here is that obviously. The school is in a financially tight place and so we have been very diligent about making sure that this has been. You know, the levy marketing committee is volunteers, like staff that are generously volunteering a lot of their time. To um, participate in that process. Um, board members that are volunteering their time, board members. That are financially contributing. Um, the P T O is coming to the table and helping. Um, and these videos too. Will not be any cost to the district. Um, so obviously a marketing package like this. Particularly if we were to farm it up elsewhere, you know, without staff volunteering their time or volunteering their time would be tens of thousands of dollars. So. Very clearly want to articulate that this is an entirely volunteer process at no cost in terms of marketing. So one of the things that we really wanted to do in our levy messaging was to make sure.
Are you looking for the link?
Yes, I'm trying.
Try that one. I think that's, I think that's it.
Making sure that we're really clearly communicating the need for the school and telling the story as convincingly as we can because let's face it, I mean.
There was the other.
It was the other one. It's been.
Blue and black is the same for me. That's the non-linked one.
This is the link one? Yeah, so a while ago, I mean, I was talking to my husband about the fact that it has been since two thousand seven. That we were effectively able to pass a levy. So it's seventeen years ago. Um, you know, it was. Two thousand twelve when we were able to pass the bond. So it's been a hot minute. Um, and clearly the ways in which we were communicating. We're not working. We're not reaching the voter. Um, so. I mean, I can't say enough good things about this board and about our levy marketing committee. Really coming to the table and just throwing out like as many ideas as we could possibly come up with. Trying to pick out what was financially feasible, just through resources and whatnot. And really give this like our best go so that at the end of the day, no one can come to the table and be like, well, you didn't do everything you can. Because holy cow. Just the sheer amount of hours into this thing is kind of crazy. Uh, so one of the things I talked to my husband about was um, doing a levy video. And then I got a little pie in the sky hog wild, so we have five. Let's see, and I'm not seeing. Uh, there should be a fifth. One on here with Dylan Jewett and um, you guys got the link to that through email?
If you want, you can go to my email and add them. It's in. That that's what the document gave.
Um, as long as it will not, it's not the one I intended to show, but as long as we're familiar with the messaging there um. And we can play it too. But okay, so first we'll start with the general levy message.
We can go to my email and open up.
Okay.
You just, you just say.
We'll let this bad boy load anyway. Where's your email? All that love.
Hey, did you know that two thousand seven was the last time that it was finally passed a levy? In that time, our school went from three hundred ninety kids to seven hundred sixty kids. That's a lot. In two thousand and twelve, voters were amazing. They approved a bond to build the middle school. But bonds only cover buildings across their new buildings. They don't cover the class of running schools.
In the last couple of years, our schools had to make further decisions by cutting twenty fifty thousand dollars in expenses. We even lost four staff positions.
And six free science and social studies had to be combined into one class because of work, not teachers. Without general funds or technology levies, we lose even more teachers. We need your support. And these levies can help us with broken cords. And the old gears. And they can keep our private information safe from cyber threats. We can keep up with state testing requirements. Did you know those tests are only available online?
Please help us keep West Valley great. By voting this way seven, you can support kids like me.
And through and me. To learn more, visit this website.
And then at the very end. I'm not sure why it's not there, but we have all of our where to go to visit or to learn more, what about to do that sort of thing. Um, so that is one message. And then.
I know, wasn't that bold?
Mildly terrifying how many emails you're receiving. You could search for your name.
Will there be somewhere on the videos where it says like sponsored by somebody so that people know that? West Valley is not.
So what will, what it'll be, it because. We get into a whole fun rabbit hole I learned a lot about and still cannot retain entirely. A lot about interlocal government committees. So um, if we were to say like my business sponsored it, then I have to file as an interlocal government committee. However, I can make a donation of this video to the P T O and the P T O. And then say paid for by the West Valley P T O. The address.
So the P T O is gonna look really awesome.
Yeah, so because otherwise then every single person that's contributing. Has to file paperwork and then file with the Montana Commission or Political Pract- Practices and then file financial reports. Just super exciting for in, I'm, yeah, different donation.
So any donation is gonna come through the P T O and then we're gonna sponsor to the levy. I mean, we're already like sponsoring the levy, but we're gonna be kind of that middleman paperwork.
Try searching on your name or like, it's probably easier.
Okay, so this is with Dylan Jewett, Anna Porter and Kate Wilson. And so we'll throw a B roll over this.
West Valley always felt like home. Teachers really took the time to get to know you and even though it's become a big school, it always felt small. It gave me the skills I needed to be successful in high school. Hearing about the cuts and what the school might lose without the levies is really sad. Students here deserve to have the resources and experiences that I had when I was here.
West Valley comes in near the bottom in terms of voter approved funding. And it's spending per pupil compared to other Flathead County school districts. Despite this. We have always been known for delivering top tier education. For a long time, we've been able to do that with very little, but that time is up. We desperately need our community to help us now if they want us to maintain the quality that we've always been known for.
These levies are a lifeline for our school and for the students we serve. The general fund levy is crucial for attaining classroom teaching positions. Supporting struggling learners. And ensuring our facilities are safe and conducive to learning by fixing failing heating systems. And making important repairs to the older parts of the school. The technology levy will enable us to cover the costs of unfunded state mandated testing that can only be done online. It will help us to safeguard student data and to keep our instructional devices operational. Both of the levies are all about making sure that kids have what they need to be safe, to learn and to thrive.
Um, so we have um. Videos from Stephanie and Marilyn. And. There we go. Uh, and Mark. This will be the final product, kind of similar to how um. The previous three will be with like B roll over the top.
Years ago, wise and generous people in our community funded our education. I think it's important that we play this forward. Our school board, all of whom have kids or grandkids currently attending West Valley School. And the administration worked very hard to pare down the expenses to the bare man. But the amount of money from the levy that was passed in two thousand seven. Just can't be stretched any further. We're in the process of forming the leaders out tomorrow, right here in West Valley School. So it's real important that we have the teachers, the technology. And the infrastructure to give them the best start we possibly can.
I'm like, we filmed a lot of people. That is not normal. So, yeah, I mean, essentially, I guess, last thing, just we'll take a quick peek at the webpage. Um, but really highlighting. Kind of some of our messaging in terms of, you know, the cuts that we've made, the need that the district has. Um, the informational letter that we sent out to parents that we approved a while ago. You know, stuff from Mark's reporting, but just really trying to let the community know. Where we're at and what the need is and then also um, what the cost to them will be. From there, I guess the only final thing. Would be um, one piece that Lance said that we can do particularly when rolling out these videos and whatnot. Uh, you know, this cat has volunteered her time in creation of social media posts and scheduling. Um, but then. Just during this levy period, adding me as an admin on the Facebook page. Or any of you fine people. Dive into the land of social media. Um, so that that way, um, you know, as we're scheduling this stuff out with official board messaging that. You know, people are understanding that that is being done through a volunteer basis. And we are correctly utilizing public resources. We have been all the way through. Yeah. That is messaging that we're looking at approving.
Oh, great.
Thank you, guys. So many. And it's so many.
Approve. The mess levy messaging and action plan.
Yeah, and just adopt it as an official, an official message from our school board.
I'll make a motion to adopt the levy messaging plan and action plan and make an official.
Message.
Message for the school.
I'll second.
All right. A unanimous.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.